Wednesday, August the 27th. Please stand for invocation led by Pastor Tony Legere, Public Safety Chaplain, and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good morning, everyone. Let's pray together. Our Father, we just stop and pause and say thank you to you. Brand-new day, just like you, Father, to favor us with new days, new opportunities, and we give thanks to you for these. And we welcome you, we welcome your Spirit even into this room. We pray that you would bless those who give to our community leadership and that today, Lord, would be monumental and was accomplished to encourage our citizenry. We pray that you continue to smile upon a people whose God is the Lord. We pray this in Christ's name. Amen.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rokoff, President Small.
Here.
Vice President Gregory.
Here.
Councilmember Penn.
Here.
Councilmember Carroll.
Here.
Councilmember Reynolds.
Here.
Councilmember Dave. Councilmember Woods.
Here.
Statement of rules.
Good morning, everyone. It's good to see everyone this morning. Welcome to our Wednesday, August 27, 2025, meeting. At this meeting, we do have rules. At this time, I ask if anyone have any type of electronic device, including cell phones, please at this time put on the off or the vibrated position. The off or the vibrated position. Any person that is desiring to address the Mobile City Council must sign in indicating the resolution, the ordinance, or public hearing agenda item before entering the meeting. When addressing this council, the speaker must give his or her name. Any person that is desiring to speak on an non-agenda item must contact the City Clerk Office no later than 2:00 PM on Thursday prior to the council meeting. The subject that he or she wishes to express to the Mobile City Council must be identified pertaining to the City of Mobile business. Anyone who has not given a profit note to the City Clerk Office and wish to speak on a non-agenda item would not be allowed to address this council. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to address this council. A bell will sound to indicate the end of two minutes. One minute remain for summarizing. The second bell indicates that your time has expired. When addressing the council, there will be no personal address to any individual council members. All statements are to be made to the chair who will recognize any council member who wishes to respond. To maintain decorum, there will be no undue applause or public outcry allowed. Madam Clerk?
Approval of minutes of August the 19th.
So moved. Second.
After moving second and then discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Minutes approved.
Communications to Mayor Stimson.
Good morning. It's good to see everyone this morning. I thank you for being here. Just one moment. First off, I want to congratulate all the candidates that entered into the race, whether it was the city council or the mayor's race. I also want to thank them, compliment them, congratulate them. Also want to thank Lisa Carroll. This wasn't an ordinary city election. All the district lines had been redrawn, which makes for a lot of confusion of where people vote. They think they voted the same place year after year, and that wasn't necessarily the case for a lot of our constituents. And like most people, they really don't look to see where they vote until right before they go vote. But anyway, I think they did a really good job. Hopefully, in the runoff, people will now recognize where their voting locations are. So they worked hard to get that done. So thank you, Ms. Carroll. I've got a couple of proclamations I want to read. The first one has to do with the Americans with Disabilities Act. And I would ask, I think Carolyn Green is here. Carolyn, if you could just come to the podium, then I'm going to read it. I'll come present it to you, and then you can make a few remarks. And I see that you've got several folks with you, maybe within the Civitans Club. I see Randy. Randy, good to see you again. All y'all that have been supporting this for so many years, thank you. And the proclamation reads, whereas on July 26, 1990, President George H.W. Bush signed into law the Americans with Disabilities Act to ensure the civil rights of people with disabilities and eliminate discrimination against them. And whereas, the ADA has expanded opportunities for Americans with disabilities by reducing barriers and changing perceptions and increasing full participation in community life, which has motivated the City of Mobile to continue our efforts to fully implement the ADA. And whereas throughout the year and on the anniversary of ADA, we celebrate and recognize the progress that is made by affirming the principles of equality and inclusion and recommitting our efforts to reach full ADA compliance. Now therefore, I, William S. Stimson, the 108th Mayor of the City of Mobile, do hereby officially recognize July 26, 2025, as the 35th anniversary of the Americans with Disabilities Act in the City of Mobile. Thank you, Carolyn. And I'll come present this to you.
Good morning. I'm Carolyn Green, a member from District 5 of the Mobile Advisory Commission for the Disabled and mother of John Green, who had a near-drowning accident as a young child and who's in a wheelchair. Thank you, Mayor Stimson and City Council, for the proclamation today commemorating the 35th anniversary of the Americans with Disabilities Act. The Mobile Commission for the Disabled, the citizens of Mobile with disabilities, and their advocates appreciate the great advances made in Mobile's infrastructure for accessibility, which provides the opportunity to enjoy life in beautiful Mobile. Example, the sidewalks. The sidewalks are wonderful. Thank you, thank you. And the adult changing table at the New Civic Center. And the special needs assistance station for youth, snazzy tent that was at our Battleship Fourth of July celebration, and more to come. Thank you all, and especially Don Rose, our Mobile ADA Coordinator and Chief Procurement Officer. We have people with disabilities here who would like to offer their thanks also by standing or raising their hand. You all stand, please. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next proclamation is about National Community Health Workers Awareness Week. Is anyone here with the Health Department? Yes, if you could please come down. It's good to see you again. And so the proclamation reads, whereas Mobile County Health Department and the Mobile County, and this is a proclamation by, joint proclamation from the mayor and the city council. Whereas Mobile County Health Department and the Mobile County Community Health Workers Coalition strive to recognize the important role of community health workers in Mobile County. And whereas, community health workers are frontline public health workers who are trusted members of or have an unusually close understanding of the community served. And whereas, this trusting relationship enables the community health worker to serve as liaison, link, and intermediary between health and social services and the community to facilitate access to services and improve the quality and cultural competence of service delivery. And whereas, on September 9, 2023, Congress introduced a resolution recognizing community health workers as a profession and honor the significance of their vital roles in the community and in public health. Now therefore, I, William S. Stimson, the 108th Mayor of the City of Mobile and the Mobile City Council, in support of the efforts to advance health and safety to all Mobileans, do hereby proclaim August 25 through 29, 2025, as National Community Health Workers Awareness Week. Congratulations.
Greetings to the mayor, city council, and everyone present today. I bid you all good morning. My name is Toki Dunn, and I am the Director of Community Prevention Programs at the Mobile County Health Department, which is the oldest health department in the state of Alabama. Community Prevention Programs is housed under the Bureau of Community and Nutrition Services, headed by Ms. Pebbles King, nestled under the Prevention and Wellness Directorate headed by Dr. Stephanie Woods Crawford, all under the leadership of our Mobile County Health Officer, Dr. Kevin Michaels. It is indeed an honor to be here, along with many other community health workers, to receive this proclamation and recognition of the Third Annual National Community Health Worker Awareness Week. This week, we celebrate. Community health workers are vital to our communities. We are a resilient workforce dedicated to empowering, educating, and encouraging individuals and families to have better health outcomes, make better choices, and experience better life overall. We address the social determinants of health that are driving forces in increased health disparities, all while helping community members navigate complex health and social systems. We are the capless heroes. In the past three years, community health workers in Mobile County have helped reach over 12,000 individuals with messaging and educational sessions and referred over 1,700 individuals with chronic and acute medical conditions to needed health and social services. Today, we honor the work of CHWs in our neighborhoods, communities, county, and state. To the many who support the work that we do, thank you. To the many CHWs who are brave enough to care, happy Third Annual National Community Health Worker Awareness Week. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dunn. Is there anyone here from the United Way of Southwest Alabama? Okay. And we have a proclamation, and I'm going to read just parts of this proclamation, but it too is a joint proclamation from the mayor and from the city council. And it says, whereas the J.L. Betso Foundation, a group of dedicated citizens, created the Community Chest to serve residents of the City of Mobile and launched the first campaign for funds on January 4, 1927. And whereas, the Community Chest evolved in 1981, and the United Fund became the Mobile Area United Way. And then in 1990, the United Way of Southwest Alabama began serving surrounding counties and the municipalities. And whereas, the United Way of Southwest Alabama recognizes four key pillars to our community's overall success through their vision to strengthen communities by focusing on uniting and mobilizing resources in support of our four impact areas: youth opportunity, healthy communities, financial security, and community resiliency. And whereas, United Way of Southwest Alabama's annual community campaign officially kicks off today, on August 20, well, kicks off on August 28, 2025. Now therefore, I, William S. Stimson, the 108th Mayor of the City of Mobile and the Mobile City Council, do hereby proclaim United Way of Southwest Alabama is one of the leading nonprofits in Southwest Alabama and wish them much success as they kick off their annual campaign to improve the quality of life of our residents. We will present that to them at the appropriate time. And the last, my last remarks have to do with this pamphlet that is, booklet that's recently been published. Over the last several months, I've been listening to various candidates talk about public safety. And obviously, when that's going on, you just sit there and listen to see what's being said, but I want to make a few observations. You know, a lot of times when we think about public safety, you're thinking policemen or you're thinking fire medics. But there's a whole lot more that goes into it than that, and I want to tell you about some of the programs that we're doing, just so that you understand it. But you know, obviously, our first responders are the backbone to public safety. Each year, the Mobile Police Department and Fire Rescue publish an operational report, something very similar to this. But this is a comprehensive look at the programs and initiatives of the combined public safety, which they oversee, which are beyond the critical services by Fire Rescue and by the Police Department. It highlights the City of Mobile's efforts in crime prevention and mitigation, youth services and mentorship, homelessness and mental health, and resilience and sustainability. This shows how much the city is doing to serve victims of crime, local families, students, and the community as a whole. I want to thank Public Safety Director Rob Lasky and Deputy Director Curtis Graves. Curtis, if you'll stand up, and Rob, if you'll stand up, just to be recognized for all that you're doing to make this happen. So this is available to the public, and I don't see Jason, but I think it's also online. But just to go through some of it, this is the team. So we obviously know about the Police Department. We know about Fire Rescue Department. Some don't know about the Gulf Coast Technology Center, but all of this is explained in this booklet. When it comes to violence prevention and mitigation, we have the Victim Services Unit. We have our Youth Matter Group. We have a Family Intervention Team. We have the, that's Youth Violence, I'll say, Prevention Team. I see Diallo Green sitting up here, the Intervention Specialist. We have the Public Safety Community Facilitator Program. We're bridging the gap. The Hospital-Based Violence Intervention Program. We have an underage drinking detail. We have SCORE, which is Second Chance or ELTS. We have Project Thrive. We have, anyway, I'm not going to go through all of them, but that is just some of them that come, the things that we're trying to do to prevent crime, but also at once we have victims of crime. There's been comments made, well, if I'm become mayor, we won't need a Public Safety Director, okay? We don't see where we need it. All of these programs take the coordinated effort of both the departments, okay? Plus all the other things that I've said. But one of the things that I didn't say has to do with what we say is the resilience and sustainability. So when it comes to disaster preparedness and response, that comes under the Public Safety Director. We have what's called an SVP Fellowship, where we're working in conjunction with every other agency to make sure that we can respond to any kind of crisis. We have recycling that comes under the Public Safety Director. Literate education, energy efficiency and conservation, hazard mitigation, coastal resiliency. A lot is being done. A whole lot is being done, and we're making a difference. And so I would just kind of plant the seed here today that going forward, I hope everybody understands that the structure that has evolved over the last 12 years has been done for a reason, and it's for three things. It will be not just, it is prevention, it is enforcement, but it's also after the fact, how do you deal, people, how do you help people deal with being the victims of crime? So you have those three legs that we've been focusing on for a number of years. That's not to say that we can't do a better job. A better job can always be done, but I can rest assure you that the people are in place to want to make sure that we advance that ball. So I hope that you'll pick up the booklet and look at it yourself and see what all is going on. So, Mr. President, that concludes my remarks. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President?
Mr. Penn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mayor, for presenting this. I think this is amazing tool to be able to use. Can we get this in a link that we can send out to our constituents in our newsletter? Because a lot of times, me and you talked about it, Rob, but I think this is great because a lot of times they say, where the resource is at? What the city is doing? And all this information is right here in this booklet, and if we can get that link so we can send out. And I'm not sure if this already are in our libraries or our community centers. I think that would be a plus, too, to get this booklet there as well. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Reynolds.
I just want to make a statement regarding the Public Safety Director, Rob Lasky, and just the department in general, that there's a lot of things that happen in our government that people just aren't aware of. And now that we've gone through this sort of campaigning process, I've heard from a lot of people who have questions about, you know, everything under the sun. The city is actively doing a lot of things to address these issues, and many of them fall under Rob Lasky. If y'all only knew the conversations that I have with him and everybody else here on this council are constantly calling and asking, what are we doing about this? Or, you know, and they're very nimble, and it's a very useful thing for us, I believe, and a very useful position for our city. And I want to personally say thank you, Director Lasky, for your willingness to hear us out and then take action, not just let things sit oddly by, but actually put things into place to move the city forward. So thank you for that. And this, I want to encourage everybody who's paying attention, and there ain't a whole lot of people paying attention, it doesn't seem, but everybody that is paying attention, please read through this. This is a lot of stuff here that the city is doing, and there are active programs to address a lot of the issues that we, that were raised and we found throughout this whole campaign process. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. And Dito, I agree with everything that my colleagues stated. One thing I can state that Mr. Lasky, you know, he don't mind even coming to community meetings, you know, since the last several ones I had, I looked up and there he was in the back answering questions. I appreciate everything you do, Mr. Lasky. Madam Clerk?
Monthly finance reports.
Good morning. Good morning, Mayor, Council. The report I have for you is for through July 31 of this year. Beginning on page one of the report, you'll see our beginning balance and ending balance across the top of the page. As we migrate down to the bottom, you'll see that our total fund balance on July 1 was $176,573.92. It dipped a little bit at the end of the month to $175,191.618. Reserve fund stayed static at $58,626,210. General fund operating balance went from $172,944.182 to $116,565,408. We expect that to be the same. We expect to see a trend for that to go down over the next two months. July, August, September are our leanest months of the year as it relates to revenue versus expenses. So we expect our July, our August and September reports to reflect smaller numbers, and we knew that going in. That's just a standard part of our cash flow model for the year. Page two, at the top of the page, you'll see highlighted year-to-date actual and year-to-date budget. Our total sales tax, year-to-date actual was $168,45,188. Our year-to-date budget was $171,385,558. I will say that within that number, we had a number of refunds. It's typical each year for the city to have to issue refunds and rebates for overpayments on sales tax. So far to date this year, that was about $1 million. Again, that's standard across every city. You're going to do those. That $1 million, even though it was a prior period collection, it shows as a net negative to the budget. So if you were to put that $1 million back into our revenue, and we actually were up just about $1 million above that. Again, the $1 million out was charged against the revenue that was in. In the 26 budget, you'll see a line item, or there is a line item in the 26 budget that is refunds out, so there wouldn't be a skewing of the revenue for the 26 budget. It's an actual revenue in, and then there's expense line out for any refunds or rebates that we have to pay. Going down the page, you'll see our other taxes or other revenues were $61 million a year-to-date, $61,990,912. Our year-to-date budget was $60,56,711. So we're a little over in that line. The next page, page three, on our business licenses and permits, year-to-date actual Year-to-date budget was $52,451,543. So our business license is a little up this year over what we have projected, and that's obviously a good thing, a good thing for the city. On page four, in the middle third of the page, as you go down, you'll see our total revenues for the city when you combine all of those revenues. Year-to-date actual was $304,777,740. Our year-to-date budget was $302,830,93. So we are literally less than one-half of 1% accurate what we projected for the year versus what we collected for the year. So revenues have held steady. Again, we expect the unassigned balance or the general fund balance to decrease over the next 60 days. This is a natural course of the cash flow process. As you get through the departments, none of the departments, any of the expenditures stand out. All of those are generally within the framework of where we had budgeted. The last page of this becomes important. On page eight, where you'll see at the bottom of the page, our year-to-date actual expenses were $258,567,966. Our year-to-date budget was $303,970,92. In '25, we have not transferred the amount of money to capital that we transferred in '24. That's the difference there. You may recall, we've had previous discussions where we transferred $36 million from operating to capital in '24, and that was the net difference there. One of the questions that we brought about, and we'll discuss this at the budget meeting next week, is what happens to the difference, right? If we brought that money in, and those are unspent monies, for the 26 budget, again, which we'll discuss in greater detail next week, we actually reviewed, we didn't attempt to just pass a budget to balance this year to get to zero balance. For the 26 budget, we actually went back and applied fiscal year actuals for '24 expenses and '25 expenses, and we're able to shave those expenses off in '26 by about $14 million. So what happens to the money this year? It goes into the general fund checking account. What happens next year? We reduced our expenses by about half of that, by about half of that number. Again, we'll get into greater detail next week, but that's where the unspent dollars went. Cash account this year, and then budgeted reductions next year. With that, I'd be glad to answer any questions anyone may have.
And the questions are coming from this council. You did state that business license is up. Is that because we, the city, have more businesses, or the profits of the businesses is more than they, you know, we anticipated for them gaining?
We think that's due to just price increases. We haven't seen anything that indicated there was a substantial growth up or down in the actual business practices. We think that was based on prior year prices that increased in sales. With our sales tax being flat, we know that there's no growth. We believe that that were '23, '24 price increases that increased the business license because they're based on prior year sales.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much.
Yes, sir, and thank all of you.
Madam Clerk?
Adoption of the agenda?
So moved.
After moving second and then discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Agenda is adopted.
Appeals. We have requests for a waiver of the Norris Ordinance on September 1 in Spanish Plaza.
So moved.
Second?
After moving second and then discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Appeal passed.
Public hearings. Today is a public hearing to consider rezoning property located at 4421 Government Boulevard from R1 to B3.
This opened up the public hearing for this particular said item. Is anyone present that would like to address the council on this particular said item? If not, this public hearing is closed.
Public hearing. Today is a public hearing to fix costs for demolition of structures at 2054 Bucker Road South and 1302 Flicker Court.
This opened up the public hearing for this particular said item. Is anyone present that would like to address the council on these items? Come on down by stating your name and the address that you have come down talking about.
Good morning, Mayor, City Council.
Morning.
I'm here for 1302 Flicker Court.
Yes, sir.
Yes, I was hoping I can get some time to pay that B.
Yes, sir. You see the gentleman that's back there? He's just asking, well, no, this is really just fixing the cost.
Yes.
And everything. And Mr. David, he can talk to you and tell you what the next steps would be, and how can you go beyond this and everything, but this is just fixing the cost of and everything. But at the end of the meeting, just talk to the gentleman right there.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you so much for coming.
All right, thank you.
All right. Is anyone else present that would like to address the council on these items? If not, this public hearing is closed.
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council. There are no, there's no one signed in for non-agenda. There are no, there's no one signed in for non-agenda or agenda items. Ordinance is held over. 64043, consider rezoning property located at 4154 and 4164 Moffett Road from B2 to I1. 64044, consider the proposed modification of a previously approved HUD for property located at 685 Schillinger Road South.
So moved.
Second.
Proportional moving, second in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
CIP resolutions held over. 211087, authorized contract with Backman Russell Electric Company for Airport Boulevard Congestion Management Project Signals. 211088, authorized contract with Nils Schaefer for intersection improvements congestion management on Airport Boulevard. 211089, authorized contract with Jay Hunt Enterprises General Contractors for Tricentennial Park.
So moved.
Second.
Proportional moving, second in discussion.
Yes, Mr. President.
Mr. Penn.
I'm glad that we'll be able to approve the improvements at Tricentennial Park. We adding the dog park, fixing the facilities, new improvement to the restrooms. So this is a great day in District 1. Thank you, Mr. President.
Another discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
Consent resolutions held over. 371114, recommend approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a lounge retail liquor Class 1 license to Points Bar and Lounge on Navco Road.
So moved.
Second.
Proportional moving, second in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
Resolutions held over. 011090, authorized intergovernmental agreement with Mobile County Commission for renovation of the Vernon Crawford Law Office. 011091, authorized addendum to the Next Gen Asset Management Software License Agreement and software products and services. 081093, approved purchase order to CDW Government for subscription for malware and network security software and services. 081094, approved purchase order to Environmental Systems Research Institute for subscription and consulting and training services. 081095 through 081109, approved purchase orders to Joe Bullard Chevrolet, Long Lewis Ford of Shoals, Max Sweeney Auto Group, Clanton, Stivers Ford, Lincoln for various SUVs, transit vans, pickup trucks, and express vans. 501111, authorized issuance of municipal sales and use tax exemption certificate for the Mobile River Bridge and Bayway Project. 451112, accept naming of streets in Angle Brook subdivision right of way.
So moved.
Proportional moving, second in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
Ordinance is being introduced, 64045.
Per council rules, this will be laid over for one week.
Consent resolution is being introduced, 401115 through 601119.
Move to waive the rules for immediate consideration of these resolutions as read.
Proportional moving, second in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Rules waived. Madam Clerk.
401115 and 1116, fixing the cost for demolition of structures at 2054 Buckner Road South and 1302 Flicker Court. 601117, approval for award of special bonus to the City Clerk's Office Employee of the Month. 601118 and 1119, determine and appropriation to Mobile Community Action and Regency Homeowners Association serve a public purpose and approved payment.
So moved.
Second.
Proportional moving, second in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
Resolutions being introduced, 011120 through 211128.
Move to waive the rules for immediate consideration of resolutions. 081121, 081122, 081125, with the rest being laid over for one week. Second.
Proportional moving, second in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Rules waived. Madam Clerk.
081121, approved purchase order to Dana Safety Supply for shipping 30 fitted SUVs. 081122, approved purchase order to Ingram Equipment for to replace damaged operator control station on Knuckle Boom Truck. 081125, approved purchase order to Technical and Scientific Application Inc. for laptop computers and monitors for AE Department.
So moved.
Second.
Proportional moving, second in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Resolution passed.
Call for public hearings. 411129, call for public hearing to consider rezoning property located at 813 Lakeside Drive from B3 and I1 to B3 scheduled September 30th.
So moved.
Second.
Proportional moving, second in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Public hearings called.
Announcements.
District 5, Councilman Davis.
Thank you, Mr. President. The city council has received the proposed fiscal year 2026 budget from the administration. We will have next week, on September 2, Finance Committee will meet to review the budget with the Finance Director. That'll be at 1 o'clock in the city council's conference room on the ninth floor. This will be a working session. There will be no public comment. On September 9, following Tuesday, we will have at this meeting a public hearing on the budget, at which time anyone who has something to say about it can be recognized to speak. And then on September 16, we intend to vote on the budget. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thanking Councilman Davis. District 4, Councilman Reynolds.
No announcements.
District 2, Councilman Carroll.
No announcements.
District 6, Councilman Woods.
Yes, Mr. President. I just want to remind everybody, September 18 at 5:30 at Oak Park Church, we'll have a District 6 community meeting. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Woods. District 1, Councilman Penn.
Thank you, Mr. President. This Friday, we will have the Battle of District 1. That's versus LaFlore, and you and Ms. Wright, that's the only two high schools in District 1, inviting everyone to come out 7:00 PM at LaFlore Stadium. And so let's have a great time for the Battle of District 1. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Penn. District 7, Vice President Gregory.
And no announcements.
What?
Okay. Greetings to the citizens of District 3. First, I'd like to take my hat off and thank the administration, and also I thank Carleen Stout and the real estate team for a very, very successful walk down memory lane at the South Brookley Elementary School on this past Monday. They came in, made sure the lights was on, the grass was cut, and I really wasn't anticipating not that many people to come. I would anticipate maybe about 40 people to show up, but it was like three times that many people that showed up on this past Monday. I mean, many people had came, it was like, almost like an all-class reunion for South Brookley Elementary School. Again, I'd like to thank the administration and the real estate team for helping to put this together, and also the citizens of, especially South DIP, for bringing this idea to come together and, you know, pretty much to go down memory lane. Again, demolition is starting this week, and the citizens down there are pretty much excited about the new community center that is hoping to come very, very, very soon. Speaking of community center, on this, next week, on September 3, we are having a grand reopening of the New House Teen Center. Again, this particular area, South DIP, really don't have a community center, but we do have a little small area at the New House Park, and we do have a building there where we call it the Teen Center, but it will be reopening on next week, on September 3, from 5:00 to 7:00 PM. And they're asking everyone to bring canned goods to this event, and saying at the end of the year, all the collected items will be donated to families that is in need. Again, that is on September 3, from 5:00 to 7:00 PM, the reopening, grand reopening of the new Teen House Center, which they're calling the Hump Day Hangout Paint Edition. Okay? Anything from the administration?
Mr. President.
Mr. Reynolds.
I forgot to mention the exceptional job our City Clerk's Office did to conduct this election. I know it was not easy. I know you worked your tails off, and I know everybody got out of here very late last night. I want to say thank you for all the work that y'all do. It doesn't go unnoticed.
Thank you, and thank you to all of my staff. I could not do it by myself. Thank you to the administration for your help and support always, and to all the departments that helped us, especially IT, GIS, and some of the members of some other departments, public buildings that came, pitched in and helped us get things moving and picked up and put out. So thank you all.
Mr. President.
Mr. Penn.
I just want to join in with Councilman Reynolds. We have an amazing team, amazing staff, so I just want to thank Lisa and her team and everyone that just make it happen with the election, but just with everything that they provide for us here on the council and the administration as well. Thank y'all so much.
Dito.
Motion to adjourn.
Proportional moving, second in the discussion. I'd like to wish all the Mobilians happy Labor